Wait a couple of minutes to allow people to virtually come in the room.
Give me the signal and we'll start.
They're broadcasting at the moment and the attendees are starting to come in the room. So we'll give them a few moments and then we can begin.
Thank you.
Did we share the link?
Yes, whenever you're ready, Dr. Thornton.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education's April 2nd meeting. Again, we're meeting via Zoom, virtually teleconference. And I want to thank the public and all for the patience that you're demonstrating as we go through an alternate way of meeting. Before we begin, I'd like to ask, as usual, everyone to please turn off your wireless communication devices. They interfere with our meeting. This is the second virtual meeting of the Board of Education, and again, I want to thank everyone, the board members, our staff, Dr. Golson, and the viewing public for your patience through this process. The Board of Education, as you can see, is committed to continuing its operations through the COVID-19 process. We will conduct our business to make sure that we're taking care of the business of our school system. For those who are not able to observe our meeting now, please remember that our meeting is being recorded and the information from our meeting will be available to the public via the Board's webpage. So please feel free to sign in there following our meeting to access it. There are some ground rules that I'm asking our board colleagues to please follow. Except when there's a time for the board member to speak, I will ask them to please move their microphones to avoid any background noise. I'd ask board members to please raise your hands and I would acknowledge you. If I do overlook you for any reason, please just avoid your desire to speak and I will recognize you. I will keep a list of the board members speaking. Each one has a five-minute first round and a three-minute subsequent round. Once the list is completed, then we'll move on to the next agenda item. I do want to say just briefly, again, thank everyone in the community for your patience. I want to thank our board members for their outreach to their constituents, both in their districts as well as countywide during the COVID-19 process. And I especially want to thank Dr. Golson and her team for the response that they've given to this emergency matter. I think the community is very pleased, Dr. Golson, with your team and the aggressive work. Want to especially give a shout out on behalf of the board to our custodial staff and our teachers who are working under intense pressure, administrators, everybody who's responding well to this particular emergency. I think we're seeing a strength in us that sometimes we didn't know exists. I want to thank all of our federal officials, state officials, county officials, Ms. Alsobrooks and Council Attorney, Chair Turner and the council members, as well as our senators. One of the things, our state senators and state delegates. One indication of the response that we're getting from the leadership of our community regarding this was a letter that the Board of Education received from U.S. Senator Van Hollen, speaking to the money that the community is going to get as a result of the CARES Act that was just passed by the Congress. I want to say on behalf of the board, and I've spoken to Dr. Golson about this and the board members, that we will make sure that these funds are used in a transparent and accountable way, making sure that equity issues that are so evident now among our children are indeed addressed. So Dr. Golson, on behalf of the board, we want to thank you for the attention that you're going to give to that. Two final notes and then we can move to our business. I want to acknowledge, as you know, the Prince George's County Board of Education members are very active in the community, nationally as well as at the state level and clearly locally. One indication of that is the recent election, indeed last night, of one of our members, Mr. Curtis Valentine, to be on the Board of Directors of the National Council of Urban Boards of Education. So congratulations, Mr. Valentine, for that footprint that you're providing for Prince George's County for our national large urban school systems, which Prince George's County is one. I do, a sad note, colleagues, want to announce to the public and to you, those of whom might not know, the passing of Dr. Libby's mother. So if I could ask all for a moment of silence regarding the passage of Ms. Anna Miley, who's the mother of Dr. Libby. Thank you very much. Now we'll move, colleagues, to our board prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance to start our meeting. And Mr. Swan, would you please lead us in those two items, please?
Sure, well, thank you, Dr. Thornton. So first with the prayer. Our God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies. Being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Colleagues, if we would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, Ms. King, I mean, Ms. Queen, is your hand up? Please, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Ms. Ellis, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Ahmed, here. Ms. Boozer Struther?
Here.
Mr. Burrows?
Here.
Mr. Montero?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Almelola?
Here.
Ms. Queen?
Right.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. Swan?
Present.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Mr. Wallace?
Present.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Dr. Thornton?
Present. Thank you, Ms. Ellis. And again, before we move to the adoption of the agenda, I want to thank Ms. King, Ms. Ellis, and the board staff for all the work that you all are doing to make this possible. It's going smoothly and we very much appreciate the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Dr. Thornton.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Queen, yes. Yes, Ms. Queen?
Yes, I noticed you set a moment aside for Dr. You said it, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you. We can hear you.
You set a moment aside for Dr. Libby, mom, but what about for the staff member who passed away from the COVID virus? I think we need to set a moment aside for our teacher.
We'll get those names and at our next board meeting, we'll call the names out. But colleagues, in the absence of the names, could we have a moment of silence for any of our staff members that have passed as a result of the COVID-19? A moment of silence, please. Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. King, Ms. Queen, for that notice. Colleagues, if you'll now turn your attention to our April 2nd board meeting agenda and a motion is in order to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the agenda for our board meeting of April 2nd today be approved without modification. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, let the record reflect, Ms. King, that that is unanimous. Colleagues, would you now turn your attention to our minutes for the emergency meeting that we held on March 27th? A motion is in order regarding the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
So properly moved and seconded that the minutes of May, of March 27th, the emergency meeting be approved without modification. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing, no. The ayes have it, Ms. King, let the record reflect that it's unanimous. To the public and to board members, please note that we do not have physical presence, obviously, on the part of members of the public. The members of the public have been asked to submit written comments. Those comments will be made available to the board members as well as to the public on our website. So thank all the members of the public who have submitted written comments for the board's consideration. We will now move to the consent item, which is agenda item number four. Remember that we removed the proclamation regarding National Black Day to school for obvious reasons. And Dr. Golson, I'll now ask you to introduce items four, one through four, five, and then I'll ask for a comment from this event.
Items 4.1 through 4.5 requires board approval of proclamations commemorating National Autism Awareness Month, National Child Abuse Prevention Month, National Child Abuse, National Physical Education and Sport Week, National Physical Fitness and Sports Month, and National Asian and Pacific American Heritage Month.
Thank you, and let me have a motion a second and then I'll ask for a comment by Ms. Ahmed. So properly moved and seconded that items four, one through four, five be approved. Dr. Ms. Ahmed?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Colleagues, this is our first slate of proclamations during this pandemic. I just wanted to thank Dr. Golson and her team for taking my suggestion in incorporating activities that can be done virtually for all of our students and staff members to practice all of these ceremonial months. I think it's a really good idea and a good practice to have multiple different ways and especially given this time period, clear, virtual ways, remote ways to engage in these proclamations. So thank you, Dr. Thornton, and members of the public can go to those proclamations and see exactly how they can participate in a virtual manner.
And thank you, colleague, for taking that initiative and Dr. Golson for your responsiveness in that regard. Colleagues, the vote is on items four, one through four, five. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing, no. Hearing no objections, Ms. King, let the record reflect that items four, one through four, five were approved unanimously by the board. We will now move, colleagues, to section five of our agenda. This is budget consent. And Dr. Golson, would you please introduce items five, one through five, six? Or five, sixteen, I'm sorry.
Items 5.1 through 5.16 requires board approval of resolutions for Advanced Placement Chemistry and Advanced Placement Physics C textbooks, Career and Technical Education, Early Childhood Education, Childcare Textbooks Adoption, English for Speakers of Other Languages, ESOL Language Lab 1 and ESOL Language Lab 2 Textbooks Adoption, Textbook Adoption, International Baccalaureate Mathematics Analysis and Approaches and International Baccalaureate Mathematics Applications and Interpretations Textbook Adoptions, Early Childhood Programs, Pre-Kindergarten Textbooks Adoption, Reading and English Language Arts in Kindergarten, First Grade and Second Grade, Spanish Immersion, Reading, English Language Arts in Kindergarten, First Grade and Second Grade Textbooks Adoption for Reading and English Language Arts, Middle School Elective Writing across genres, Grade 6 through 8 textbook adoption, Grades 9 through 12 Reading English Language Arts, Advanced Placement Language and Composition and Advanced Placement Literature and Composition textbook adoption, Social Studies, Grade 6 World Cultures and Geography 1, Western Hemisphere, Grade 7 World Cultures and Geography 2, Eastern Hemisphere, Grade 11 World History, English High School Electives, African American Studies, Sociology, Psychology, Geography and Women's Studies textbook adoption, World Languages, Spanish 1 through 4, Introduction to Spanish textbook adoption, and Approval of Final and Acceptance and Payment for Work at Hybridge Elementary School, Isaac Gordon Middle School, and Lewis Dale Elementary School, Unit Event and Piping Replacement at Tall Oaks High School, and an Air Conditioning Initiative at the William Schmidt Outdoor Education Center.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. Colleagues, for discussion, a motion is in order regarding five, one through five, sixteen. The motion is in order.
That'll move?
It's been properly moved and seconded by Ms. Queen and Mr. Valentine to approve five, one through five, sixteen. Ms. Ahmed and then Mr. Almelola, Ms. Ahmed?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Colleagues, I also want to thank Dr. Golson and your team on this item. I asked about a dozen clarifying questions when it came to these multiple items and her team did a very good job in trying to respond to my questions. I also understand that those questions will become available to the public. I did want to pick on one thing that I feel like I speak about every time that our textbook adoptions come before us and that is ensuring that, especially when it comes to our history textbooks for students, that we have culturally responsive material in front of students that provide perspectives that are from all backgrounds, indigenous, and not just Eurocentric backgrounds. And so I just wanted to see if, Dr. Golson, you could explain a little bit about the process by which you ensure that we're having culturally responsive materials when it comes to history for our students.
Yes, so we have a committee that actually reviews all of our textbook selections and they use a rubric that identifies an opportunity for us to make sure that all nationalities backgrounds are taken into account before we select a resource for publication. We have to document where it is found in the resource and how often it is shown up. I appreciate your questions posed and so our community will be able to see the responses as well as the rubric because Board Member Ahmed also asked for that and that will be included and posted for the public to review. We will be adding here an additional component and that is, in support of the Board of Education's equity policy, to make sure that we're including specific recommendations and characteristics that exemplify equity throughout all of our content areas.
Thank you, Dr. Golson.
One more, Dr. Thornton.
I'm sorry, please, please.
And so, Dr. Golson, the textbook selections that we've made for history for our students, can you confirm that they are culturally responsive, that they are the ones that we need to have in front of our students at this time?
Yes, I can reassure our community that the ones that we have before us now are culturally responsive and meet the needs of all of our students and reflect the diversity that exists in Prince George's County Public Schools.
Thank you, that's all, Dr. Thornton.
Before I call on Mr. Almelola, Mr. Montero, obviously, as Chair of our Academic Achievement Committee, we'll be looking forward to you to take a deep dive on this with Dr. Golson and her staff and your committee members. Mr. Almelola?
Thank you so much, Dr. Thornton. Dr. Golson, I had a couple of questions concerning just the books as well as the access to the books. Are we buying these books as classroom sets or for students to have access to and to take over?
So it varies, so if it's a resource, for example, we have several schools that are one-to-one. So when we make textbook purchases now, since it's a school that's one-to-one, we purchase the electronic version of that text. So it's important to note that the cost for electronic version is the same as if it were a textbook, hardbound. The second one is, is that it varies depending on the course, whether we are purchasing class sets or if we're purchasing one per child. I can get you that information specifically for which courses.
Okay, and then my follow-up question said, and I think you just spoke a little bit about it. I know what we're actually realizing now through this crisis, the divisional divide happening not only in our school system but all other school systems. So I wanted to ask you about the access students have to these textbooks online. If situations do arise where they're not going to be able to be in the school building to access them.
So the great thing is, is because we have a one-to-one school at both, at least the elementary, middle, and high school level. So when we make the purchase of the textbook, we also get the purchase of the access for online. So even though we only provide the access online for those one-to-one, we still have access for everyone across the district. Now that we're in this pandemic situation, it was great that we already had 10 schools that were one-to-one. So that allowed us to have access to resources that we can utilize during this process.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you, Ms. Ahmed, for initiating this inquiry, and Mr. Montero, thank you, your committee. Take a dive on that. Dr. Golson, I see your hand. Dr. Golson, did I see your hand?
No, you did not, but I was trying to identify that you had two board members who have their hand up.
Oh, yeah, I see them, I see them. Ms. Williams and Ms. Queen. Ms. Williams?
I just wanted to make a comment about the items regarding the construction. I just wanted to state and just discuss the fact that we are needing our MBE goals. I was happy to see that a number of those awards were done by MBEs and the work that was awarded to the non-MBEs had a fair amount of MBE support. So I think we're beginning to meet the goal of hiring and having work done by MBEs. So I just wanted to thank you for the effort that the staff is doing regarding that.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank Mr. Stanton for making sure that's a priority.
Thank you. As you know, colleagues, that is a strategic goal of this board and Dr. Golson, so I'm glad to see that progress being made. Ms. Queen? Ms. Queen, was your hand up?
Thank you, Ms. Williams, thank you, Ms. I'm talking. Thank you, Ms. Williams, for bringing that up because that's important. But also thank you, Reheala, for the questions that you submitted. And Dr. Golson, thank you, guys, for bringing the online, which is so important. But I'm really curious, with using so much online now, I'm hearing that a lot of the states are having problems where kids are not able to access some things because people from different states are trying to access the same thing. Will that cause a problem if you're accessing a book online if everybody from different countries are all trying to access that same book?
So I can answer the question for saying, right now, we do not foresee that being a problem. But honestly, until we are all using it at the same time, will we run into the broadband wide, worldwide access issue? So right now, I would say, I think we're safe. But honestly, what happened earlier this week with Vender, that we're actually not utilizing, which is not a textbook company, ran into a situation. I think it's no different than what we're experiencing now. Even while we're working online, sometimes our internet goes out for a few minutes because there are so many people on it. But we do have the ability to log off and get back on within a short period of time and I'm thankful that Comcast and Verizon have been great partners with us. But right now, I don't foresee it being an issue. Don't know whether it'll be an issue in the future, though.
Okay, so one last question, will the students, one last question, would the students be able to save it as a hard copy to their drive? They can always go back and delete it. That way, if, you know, if we run into that problem, they'd be able to save it.
That's an excellent question, and no, they will not because of copyright law. But that's an excellent question.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Queen, for your question and Dr. Golson for your response. Colleagues, the vote is on five, one to five, sixteen. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing, no.
Aye.
Let the record reflect, Ms. King, that the vote is unanimous. I didn't see any objections and thank you very much. Colleagues, we'll now move to item six, one, which is New Business First Reader, rescission of policies. And before I call on Ms. Ahmed, followed by Ms. Boozer Struther, I want to thank the committee for the hard work that it's doing, but also single out our three committees that are doing great work on behalf of the board, and I think this is one example of that. So Ms. Ahmed, I'll now recognize you to introduce this item.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Colleagues, members of the Policy and Governance Committee met on Wednesday, February 12th with all committee members in attendance to discuss, among other things, considering rescinding a number of policies. As you all know, we have a lot of policies and several of them date back to the 70s, 80s and are frankly out of date. And so we looked at a number of policies and before you today are six that we have voted unanimously to present to you all to rescind. At this point, what I'll do is I'll hand it over to Ms. Boozer Struther, the Vice Chair of the Committee, to provide details on why we're recommending each of these items for rescension. Is Boozer Struther?
Ms. Ahmed, before you do that, because I want to get some credit for the hard work that you're making me do, would you name the members of your committee?
Of course, it's myself, Ms. Boozer Struther, Dr. Thornton, Ms. Almelola, and Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. Ms. Boozer Struther.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Ms. Ahmed and committee members. I really appreciate all of your work on this. As Vice Chair of the Committee, this ongoing project is very important to me as we present to the public very clear policies and the procedures that go with them. So overall, what the board will see with these six, and then I think moving forward as we bring, roll them out in a digestible way, you'll see the buckets of that they may not apply to operations of the school system anymore. They're in conflict with a more current policy, just outdated due to technology, or it may be not viewed as appropriate role of the board today. So going through the six, Policy 2200, Head Start Shared Governance, this no longer applies to current operations. Policy 3600, Wireless Telecommunications Facilities, this as well is not, doesn't apply to current operations and in the case of any cell tower on, still on school property or conversations, we certainly could revisit an appropriate policy, but this one does not apply to, the way this one was written is not applicable today. Policy 4136, Appearance of School Principals at Board Meetings, this is kind of not needed, not the role of the board, and it was not in, being followed or enforced in any meaningful way. Policy 8631, Tapes of Board of Education Meetings, References, this is old technology and current policy fully includes the modern technology. Bylaw 9362, Construction of Agenda, these provisions are included. In another policy, Policy 9360 does lay out how the board constructs the agendas. Bylaw 9363, Notification of Members, similar, that this is outdated. Given implementation of new technology, the use of Board Docs is covered in the overall running of the board documents. And I would note to the board and the public that these minutes from the February 12th meeting are posted in the March 12th meeting that you can find on Board Doc. So you can see a printed version of these remarks. Thank you very much.
With that, we move on behalf of the committee to approve this as a first reader.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ahmed as Chair and Ms. Boozer Struther as Vice Chair. Because this is such a significant activity, Ms. Ellis, let's call the roll, please.
Ms. Ahmed?
Aye.
Ms. Boozer Struther?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Mr. Montero?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Almelola?
Aye.
Ms. Queen?
Aye.
Ms. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Swan?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Thornton?
Aye. Thank you, colleagues, for that unanimous vote in support.
Dr. Thornton?
Yes?
I'd like to, as a point of clarification, I'm not sure whether it's to Board Member Ahmed or to Dr. Golson, but I'm curious whether there were any state policies, particularly around seat time requirements for students. I know other states have requirements that require students are in a seat in a public school for a certain period of time that may, the governor or the state board may have waived. It's something that you all have considered or something that is out there. I know it occurs in other states, I was not sure Maryland had one.
Maryland does, and we brought it up to the state superintendent who will add it to the agenda in order for it to be modified or revised or waived based on this current pandemic.
Thank you, and for those colleagues who may not know, so there's some states that have laws that require that students are actually in a seat for a certain number of hours for it to get credit for attendance and/or other funding. And so just wanted to get clarification on that, but thank you, Dr. Golson.
Thank you. So then, colleagues, this has been successfully passed as a first reader and we'll return to it at our next meeting and hopefully approve the rescissions. But again, Ms. Ahmed and to the committee members, thank you all for the work that you're doing in this regard.
Thank you.
Dr. Golson, before, and colleagues, before we move to a motion to approve Executive Actions Act, this is a work session, but do you have any additional comments that you want to make regarding our COVID-19 response? We're just so impressed with what you and your staff are doing. Do you have any comments you want to make before we close out?
No, I just want to thank our community for being patient with us as we did the distribution of laptops. Tomorrow is the last day for those sites that were designated and selected for Friday. And honestly, parents have been extremely appreciative of the opportunity for us to serve their children during this distance learning phase. Our staff started professional development on Wednesday and they too are extremely appreciative. So I just want to say thank you to the Prince George's County Public School family, employees, who are going above and beyond to make sure that our students have some sense of normalcy, as much as they can, during this difficult time, starting April 14th, and for our parents, appreciating and just thanking them for their patience. These are unprecedented times, but we are working through every obstacle that's placed before us so that our children are able to come through this with flying colors. And so I just am. so that our children are able to come through this with flying colors. And so, I just am extremely appreciative of the Prince George's County family. Our county exec, our county council, and our elected officials, senators, and delegates have all been so supportive and we're thankful.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. Would you continue, Dr. Golson, on behalf of the board, to extend to the philanthropic community that's providing donations, increasing numbers for our children?
I sure will, and I'll provide it so the Board of Education can also provide them a formal thank you.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, a motion is in order at this point to approve actions that we took in executive session, actions involving the receipt of a report from our CEO, Dr. Golson, the discussion and approval of personnel matters regarding appointments at the executive level, discussion of investigative matters involving our internal audit office, and discussion of matters regarding Open Meetings Act, recent decision. A motion is in order to approve executive session items.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the board approves the actions taken in the executive session. Those in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing no, Ms. King, let the record reflect that that is unanimous. Colleagues, now, a motion is in order to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the meeting be adjourned. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposing no, the ayes have it, Ms. King, that vote is unanimous also. Thank you so much, colleagues, and we will have our next meeting to the public on the 15th. It will also be a Zoom teleconference. Thank the public for participating. Stay safe, colleagues, stay in, don't go anywhere. Take care. Best day, it's over. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.
Take care. Take care.